Good afternoon. Now I want to bring the regular afternoon meeting of council to order. The first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson, second by Counsel Davis. Counsel Woodward on the agenda.
I just have a personnel item, please. Oh, sorry. I'm going to wait to the camera. Yeah, we get that.
All right. Call the question. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Next item is adoption of the minutes. Regular afternoon meeting of November the 18th. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Davis, second by Counsel Woodward. Errors or omissions? Counsel Richter.
Yes. Page five, F4. There's no second or identified. It just says, "Seconded by Counselor."
Okay.
Who? Okay. Page six and seven, the changes that are expressed in the minutes are not quite correct. That, um... On page six, the one about that all directors are residents in the community covered by the association, there should be an "and" in front of that. On page seven, the activities the applicants propose to undertake are impartial and not politically biased in any form. And I believe the wording I used was but rather focus on community and neighborhood building instead.
Okay.
Okay. And then on page eight, Counsel Whitmarsh's name on F6 has been incorrectly spelled.
Okay. We got those corrections. So with all, with those corrections, can I call the question? All those in favor? Posed, carried. Do we need, is that all we need? Yep, thank you. Next is a motion to resolve in special close. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Ferguson, second.
Sorry. Are you not going to... I heard that some...
No, I'm going through a process. Yeah. It's been moved by Counsel Ferguson, second.
Okay, okay. You do it after that.
Second by Counsel Davis. Now, huh.
Sorry.
Okay, Counsel...
Kuntz.
Let me think.
A property manager.
Property, okay. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I just have a personnel item.
Personnel. Counsel Richter.
I have two personnel items.
Two times personnel. Counsel Long.
Property.
Property. Okay. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Thank you. All right. Just wait for a few more counselors. All right, good afternoon. Now reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley council. And there are no presentations and no delegations. We move straight to reports to council. Report F1 is preapproval of the 2020 Operations Centre Electrical Service Upgrade Project. And this comes with a grant, I understand. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson, second by Counsel Long. Discussion, Counsel Richter.
Yes, I'd just like to know if we move forward with this at the Ops Centre. How accessible to the public would these chargers be?
I believe there's several. One, and one or two might be accessible. We also are looking to get electric vehicles for the fleet, so I know that's part of it. Mr. Seffy, can you maybe elaborate?
That's correct, Your Worship. There is at least one that will be available for the public. There are two that are earmarked for the fleet and one for staff. So four altogether, as intended.
Four are intended, one for the public. So is this the best location to put those four in?
It's where the electric vehicles reside from the Operations Centre. So as we increase the fleet to electric vehicles now, and also, you know, as the technology improves for trucks and that sort of thing, I see more and more electrification. And I know with the electrification of the fleet that the province has mandated to 2040, certainly there's more and more of that coming along. Mr. Seffy? Okay, thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you. It's a very good report. I was just trying to figure this thing out. Is the, the preapproval is for $300,000 and there's a, there's a $75,000 grant, if I may, through the chair, that we make up, may or may not apply for?
Your Worship, the numbers are correct, as stated by Counsel Ferguson. $75,000 grant and $300,000 overall cost. The grant has been approved subject to council's approval of the township portion. So the grant is essentially approved in principle.
Okay. And it's just a simple question after that. Is, are there a number of different people that do these things? Like, do we go up to 10 years? Or is it, is it directed towards a specific agency that we can get a grant from? If I may, through a chair.
We make applications for a number, to a number of potential grant providers, Your Worship. And, and you know, we, we are, I guess, trying our best to leverage and obtain as much funding assistance as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I'm really very keen about this in particular. I think it's a good example of how we're leveraging the funding that's available for other levels of government in order for us to make the transition over to electric vehicles. So I look at it as defraying part of our costs for something we'd already have to do already. And the report points out that there's going to be cost efficiencies that come along with this. So in addition to reduced emissions, we'll have reduced fuel costs and maintenance costs because of gas and diesel. So I think it's a win-win situation. So I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you. And I'll call the question on F1. It carries unanimously. Move on to F2. It's preapproval in 2020 capital budget for precision approach path indicator in taxiway lighting. And could I have a motion, please? Counsel Long, moved, second there. Counsel Whitmarsh. I just wanted to clarify one thing, Mr. Seffy. There are two runways at the airport. One has PAPI lights. And is this for the other one, or is this to replace the existing?
Your Worship, I think it's to replace the existing. We don't, we don't intend on actually arming the other one other for taxiway and usual lighting, but not for the precision lighting.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you for that. Any discussion? Any questions? Counsel Arneson?
Thank you, Worship. Once again, I think this is a really good way to leverage some of the funding that's available. I did have a question, through Your Worship, to staff. When it says it is a solar product, does that mean it's solely fueled by solar energy? Is that what the mechanism is?
Your Worship, I believe the best way to describe it is predominantly. We have certain weather conditions that don't always allow for the, I guess, optimal use of solar, such that we can have sustainable, I guess, battery power. So the primary would hopefully be solar, but we have to have augmented as needed.
Okay. And just a secondary question, I guess, because I didn't know anything about this, so I had to do a little bit of investigation. So I learned a lot about what people need to know when they fly. But don't worry, I won't be flying anytime soon. So I looked at this and I noticed there was one product that actually was wireless. And I wondered if we knew whether or not that might be an option. Instead of having them running all the time, I believe the purpose would be to be able to signal that you wanted to have the lights on as opposed to always having them on instead and drawing...
That exists currently at the airport.
Oh, that's what it is. Oh, okay.
The pilots, when they're making an approach and if the tower is closed...
Yeah.
They do something. The mic click on a certain frequency and the lights come on.
Oh, good to know. Okay, thank you.
All right. I see no further discussion on F2. I'll call the question. And it carries unanimously. Move to F3, DCC fronting, front ending agreement, QID Holdings. Will it be incorporated? Could I have a motion, please? A motion. Counsel Kuntz, in the second there. Counsel Davis. Discussion on F3. Seeing none, I'll call the question on F3. And it carries unanimously. We move to F4. Counsel Woodward. Counsel Woodward?
Just going to make a note, Ms. Little, on F4, I'll be declaring a conflict of interest for this item. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so F4, Fort Langley BIA renewal. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Kuntz, in the second there. Have a second. We'll get this on the table. Counsel Arneson. And any discussion or perhaps Mr. Backen, maybe some background in this? I know this comes up to council every few years and some counselors that haven't been on council before, and we do go through a process.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before Mr. Backen...
Just know what he thinks. I was wondering if we could refer it back to staff, because we've got, number one, in our items that distributed to council on December 2nd, and number one, and number two, the top two items are, one from a member, a member from staff regarding the BIA, and another one from the business association itself. There's some confusion, and I just wondered, it would be simpler for a member of council just to refer it back for two parties to come together, and then the staff could come back and clarify, if it's not time sensitive.
We could, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Backen first and staff, and then if, and that's a good question about the timing of it, because I know there's a time issue in this. Mr. Backen?
Your Worship, the highest level of Business Improvement Association is really an association governed geographically by location, where the members, through a voting process, are, I guess, if passed, required to participate in certain activities that raise revenue and improve the locations itself, the district itself. That's what this is. We've had one in Fort Langley for several years, and it's operated relatively well. As with every BIA, not everyone's in favor of it, so sometimes you have parties that are concerned about it, express opposition to it, don't think they're getting value for money. But the rules are set out in the municipal act and community charter. All stipulate the processes, and it's a bit like a local area service. Once you meet a certain threshold, it's successful. Here, Counsel Ferguson's quite correct. There was the actual bylaw itself, which there is some time sensitivity, but I don't, I don't think it would be, I don't think the earth would come to an end if we didn't process this if more time was needed. I guess the question is, what will the more time provide for us? What we have before you, then, is there were some concerns raised, again, not so much about the actual BIA, but really about two issues, I guess, the process, three issues, the process, some communications about the process, and the geographic area. And then the most recent communication, we tried to clarify that the geographic area is what it is. If you want to expand that, it must be broadened. Other parties can participate voluntarily, but they can't be mandated. And we have a property that's owned by the township, where there's a leaseholder that may want to participate, may not, but be voluntarily unless the bylaw was to be amended. Second topic then comes down to, I guess, concerns raised by residents. We've tried to address those, sorry, when I say residents, by businesses. The businesses tend to be leaseholder businesses, or businesses that have leases. And as such, they certainly have some value to it, but it's the owners that actually make the decision about if they want to see the BIA approved, because technically they pay for it, but the argument could be made that they pass it through on the leases. And then finally, I guess, it's the structure of it going forward. How can some of these, I guess, these concerns be alleviated? One of the recommendations is that we do have a staff member on it in ex officio capacity, really to try to clarify these things and to build the relationship to go forward. I think that whether council wishes to defer this or proceed with it, the concerns that are raised and the answers to them don't affect the mechanics of the structure that's actually here. The structure's going to be the same in any event, but if council feels that we should have further consultation, that can be achieved as well.
Thank you. The, in the first paragraph, it says for all levied businesses, however, it is the property owners that, now is it the businesses that have to be petitioned? Or is it the property owners that are petitioned? Because some are property owners that are renting their properties out to businesses. So how does that? Is that a typo?
The reference is intended to be the property owners. That's what it's intended to reference. It's really should be saying all levied business owners or all levy, all levied properties where businesses are operating. It's really referring to the owners.
Properties within that.
Right.
Is it commercial properties within the...
Commercial properties.
Okay, that could be, that could be changed. So thank you for that. It is helpful. It's the pleasure of council. I mean, I think we could deal with this, and certainly it starts the process. We still have, but there's still steps that have to happen. A process begins. The petition process begins, and then it comes back to council. So we do have time to digest a lot of this information. Like you say, I don't know if it changes the mechanics if we defer this or not, but that's up to the pleasure of council. So I think with an amendment to change the word from levied businesses to levied properties, is that, would that be more appropriate? And so that was, so, so before we do anything, I'd ask if that's unanimous consent, just to change the word from businesses to properties?
Businesses pay taxes.
They do. Well, it's the property owners that pay the taxes. And, and the business, if there's a, say, for example, if you're renting a space, you pay rent, and in the rent, sometimes property taxes are, are, well, the property owner's passing it on, or sometimes you pay it. So is it more accurate to say properties than business, property owners? Or is the properties? You're living in the property, you're not living in a business.
That's effectively correct, Your Worship. The point is, then, if there's a property and there's a lease, will that business be paying some of these charges through their lease? They likely will be, but the legislation's quite clear. You go with the property owners themselves, not the business operators.
So the petition is for the property owners?
Correct.
So the properties. Okay, so I think it's more of a technical change, to be more accurate, to reflect the legislation. So unless there's opposition to that as an amendment.
So is that through each of the recommendations? There's five of them. Is that what you're talking about? Each of the five recommendations change businesses to properties?
I think that's another, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Ferguson, I think we can clear. Counsel Ferguson, I have the floor. I think we can clarify these things right now. That's what we're here for. Mr. Backen, thanks for that. Counsel Whitmarsh. So where it does say levied businesses, so it should be levied property, properties throughout.
Your Worship, perhaps if we just slow down. It's not intended to be as broad as Counselor Whitmarsh suggested. The first one is actually properties. Let's just go through them here very briefly. The second one deals with, it's referring to businesses, but it's referring to a Quantlin First Nation business, and that's outside the area. So that one doesn't need to be changed, because it would mean really the underlying property would have to be included. The reference there, I believe, was to voluntary, voluntary participation. It can't be mandated without a bylaw change. The third paragraph, again, could be changed to properties. The fourth paragraph doesn't need such a change. And then the fifth paragraph doesn't need to change. So it would really be the third one, where it says businesses levied, would be properties levied.
Okay. And just another, another question. So to sit on the board of directors, do you have to be a property owner? Or can it be a business? A business, so a business who doesn't own the property is paying rent for the space. Are they eligible to be on the board of directors?
It depends, really, in terms of the membership, in terms of the property owner. They can actually allocate that to themselves, or they can allocate it to their tenant.
So that's, that is appropriate, then. Okay. So unless there's concern with changing that, just to accurately reflect the legislation, I'll take that.
I have it.
Okay, Counsel, then we'll need a motion. Counsel. So why don't we deal with the amendment? And then, okay, Counsel Richter?
Yeah, well, the issue that I have is, with the wording here, is that what happens to all the businesses if they're not the property owner? Like, it's just the property owners that are going to be involved in this?
That's, the petition has to go to property owners, because they are the ones that are levied.
Okay. But isn't the impetus behind this coming from business owners who are not property owners?
So it gets a little complicated, because they can sit on the board and have input, but actually the petition is to the property owners. However, business owners, business, business owners who may not own the property but are paying rent and leasing it are eligible for sitting on the board. I get nods from the board here, so.
That's correct, Your Worship. I use a local area service as the example. It's more typically understood, a local area service, when you're looking at actually adding extra cost to the property, it goes to the landowner, even though they may have rental operation on it or something else. It goes to that. Same thing happens here. In this case, the businesses may or may not be part of the actual BIA itself, because it depends upon the wish, the will of the owners, because ultimately, it's perceived that the ownership of the property will ultimately have to pay it, even though the tenants may not be there. So it is, I guess, a little bit inequitable in that sense, in that the landowners will determine how the triple net costs for the businesses or for the property will be passed on to the tenants, but that's their decision under the legislation.
All right. So I'm going to ask one more time. Is there a concern with changing it to reflect the legislation?
I'm trying to get on the list.
I don't know. I just want to deal with this one, a quick amendment. But if there's more discussion, Counsel Ferguson, I have discussion.
Well, I just think it's, I think we're throwing an awful lot of things out. The administrator said that, you know, it depends on the lease, depending on whether they pay the property taxes or not. And I think many of us are, may or may not be business people, know that. I think, Mr. Mayor, today, I mean, I'm not trying to put pressure on you. Today, we got a, today on our table, we got a four-page letter from staff and a four-page letter from the business association. I don't know how many members sitting at this table have read that and gone over it. I'm not sure if you have or not. All I'm saying is, I don't know if you got that quote from me, Mr. Backen, but, you know, the world's not going to come to an end if we just refer it back, get some answers, clarify your position. And that way, I don't think there'll be many changes, but I think both parties will be able to sit down, as well as staff, and we'll be able to sort this thing out, and I think in a logical way.
I'll get to that.
And I would make that referral, that's all.
Yeah, I'll get to that. I heard you wanted to refer. I just wanted to get this cleaned up, let people talk about it. Counsel Long?
Well, I think we should refer it, too, because I haven't had a chance. And if you have read it, then you haven't done something else, because we only got it at 2:00. But when we do come back, I think we need to separate, Your Worship. There's five very distinct, one, two, three, four, five, quite different things, and some have businesses and some don't, and all of that. So we should debate each one and vote on each one separately, but not necessarily today, unless we want to allow a couple hours.
Fair enough. So one last question before I go to your referral. Mr. Backen, the time, is this time sensitive at all?
No.
Counsel Ferguson, I'm asking, Mr. ... Because I thought... Prior to April. Okay, so we can deal with this. This could come back next meeting in December. Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to make sure, because of the legislation, I'm not familiar with it. So Counsel Ferguson, do you want to make that motion?
Yes, sir.
Then staff can come back and clarify this, properties and businesses and the rest of it on the motion. So it's, this motion's being referred, but we could get some clicks on it. Mr. Backen?
We're just around the same page. The two, the changes that were suggested in terms of clarification, those are fairly easy.
Yeah.
That will come back. But what will come back, then, is we may have further input. What we seek to do, though, is not to go back and forth in terms of the characterization of the underlying facts. This is more of a process involving the, whether the thresholds are met. And part of the process now will be, once we get to the next level, will be to actually petition the members to see if they want to proceed or not. That's why we have to allow enough time before the matter's concluded, because that must be done in conjunction with the 2020 tax season, because it'll be going up in accordance with that.
So we can do, we're not referring, we're just deferring it until the next meeting to give council an opportunity to read this, what's come before us. There still is a process that would follow. So Counsel Ferguson, you want to make that motion? Is there a second or Counsel Long? On the deferral, any questions? Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'm going to support the deferral, but I'd like, I'd like the discussions that staff will be doing before it comes back to us to include this, the idea of us appointing a staff member to the Fort Langley BIA. Have we ever done this before? And, and why are we just focusing on the Fort Langley BIA? What about the other BIAs that exist?
The only BIA in the Township of Langley is the Fort Langley BIA. There are no others.
I thought Aldagrove had one.
No, they have a, they have a business. They have a business association.
Oh, okay.
There are, I think, at least three business associations. The city has a BIA, City of Langley. In Vancouver, there's some BIAs. But this is the only one in the Township of Langley. And I think the only precedence I can think of similar, where it's a separate board, is the Tourism Board, where we do have staff as ex officio on tourism Langley. And it's a similar...
Well, I personally think this is a little heavy-handed.
But that can come back next time.
And they're supposed to be voluntary organizations that manage themselves. So I think we shouldn't be interfering with them.
But we're not debating the points. We're just debating with the deferral. If you wish to defer this or not, then it'll come back, so. All right? See no further discussion. I'll call the question.
On deferral?
On deferral on F4.
Unanimous.
I'm going to cancel that vote, and I got the tenants and Mark absent. Okay, I'm calling it again. Sorry, I just had to make that one change. Carries unanimously. Can I ask Counsel Woodward to come back, please?
You can tell Counsel Woodward to come back on the camera, though. Come back, Eric.
Mark present. Counsel tenants. All right, we're back. Minutes of committees, so we're going to receive, well, H1 is, H1 is the Recreation Culture Parks Council Paris. Senior's advisory, could I have a motion to receive those on H1? Counsel Davis, Counsel Arneson, seconds. Discussion, seeing none, I'll call the question on H1. Carries unanimously. Move to H2. And this is Recreation Culture Parks Committee. There's a recommendation that council strongly consider. I don't know what that means, but we can consider it, or we're going to approve it. But maybe we can have some information from the chair of the committee come back to us. And so who's the chair?
I'm the chair.
Okay. Perhaps Counsel Woodward, if you can just give some background on this, and then...
Yeah, before we consider the sure recommendation. So the committee received a presentation from staff at the last meeting, and from that presentation came up with this motion. There's a desire from a significant number of members of the committee, obviously, to consider a residency-based summer youth pass of some form, starting next season, to get more youth involved in our recreation facilities, either during the summer period or after school, depending on council's decision. But went through the process, talked about it quite a bit, and came forward with the recommendation to at least recommend a some-fee-based but discounted youth-based pass. So that's really all they're sending it forward for our consideration. Thanks.
Thanks. So I looked, I took a look at this. There's one thing I was thinking, and maybe staff can help me out with this. This is a base $20 pass, but is there an opportunity to provide a pass that would be maybe a 10-visit pass at a reduced price to local youth? And are there other options? Because it seems, you know, and we also have a program where people who are in financial need can apply for, and I think the report talks about that. So, Mr. Backen, do you have any, you know, to deal with this, could we refer this back to staff and come back with some options? We've got a little bit of time between now and summer, so.
We have some time between now and the passage of our fees and charges by law, where it would have to be incorporated. So yes, we have some time, and I think a referral to staff would help. Some of the things that you're referencing are marketing ideas.[1683.16] Some of the things that you're referencing are marketing ideas, some of these are substantive ideas in terms of effectively coming up with a way to promote so that township, youth residents can have a greater access, and I think if we had some time, we could probably refine both of those.
Okay, thanks. I got two speakers, and then we'll look for a motion. Counsel Richter?
Yes, we got some correspondence around this, asking that an age range of age 11 to 17 be included, is that a feasible consideration?
I think it'd be something that staff could come back with, if you wanna, just to where this youth pass would be. Counsel Long?
Your Worship, we had a similar discussion at the last meeting or the meeting before, and where the commission or the committee had received a presentation from staff, and we said we'd like to have that discussion, so I think this should be included, we should have a presentation from staff here to all of council about the whole recreational facilities and what the charges are.
Okay. So, at this point, what we could do is ask for a motion...
So, we refer this to the same thing?
Yeah, just refer this to staff to come back, with some options, and they've heard a discussion. Is there a second?
Be in concert with the other discussion, which was the other part of that.
Yeah, Mr. Becken, you got that, yeah. Second by Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion on the referral, seeing none, I'll call the question on H2. Carries unanimously. H3, it's the Recreation Culture Parks Advisory Committee, and they also have a recommendation, and this is to, regarding a performing arts center in the Township of Langley. Counsel Woodward, you're also on that committee, and maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, so the committee has discussed two or three meetings in a row now, are coming up with some progress, or attempting to move forward the item of considering seriously a performing arts theater, concert hall-type facility within the Township of Langley, and wanting to move that item forward, and the idea that they came up with, in a vacuum of any additional information, was to consider the task force or standing committee or some other instrument under the, under the advisory committee's control, to come up with the terms of reference and appoint the appropriate people, but I think that, you know, given some, it'd be helpful for us to refer this back to the committee in a specific way, so I have a potential motion in that regard when you're ready for this.
Yeah, I'm ready for it.
Good. Go ahead with that, or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it would be appropriate, given the fact that, you know, before we head down the road of spending time on a terms of reference or other work items for the committee, that we refer back this recommendation for reconsideration, back to the RCPAC for further consideration, after a, wrote this down earlier, after a staff presentation to the committee at their meeting of January 15th, in an appropriate forum, regarding an overview of the history, planning, and discussions related to the subject. So I can read that again, I want this recommendation referred back to the committee for their consideration after the staff presentation.
Is there a second, or? Counsel Richter seconds it. Discussion on the referral, seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries unanimously. We move on to H4, this is our own CPC recommended motion, can I have a motion, Counsel Arneson? I knew it, I knew you'd be, I knew it. Counsel Arneson moves it, second by Counsel Whitmarsh. Any discussion, we had a good discussion that day, so Counsel Arneson, do you wish to speak to this?
Yeah, I'll just say a couple of words about it. I think it's great that we had that really robust discussion about our targets and goals. I think that this is a way, so both components of this motion will be helpful. We can look, as we found earlier, to get funding from other levels of government, and empowering staff, I think, and all this process is very critical, because they are the ones that have the expertise, and it's a focus of their sustainability employment, the goals of their department, to make sure that we're aligning our activities with these different benchmarks that we have for greenhouse gases. So I think it's really critical, I'm hoping we're gonna unanimously support this.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Actually, 2030's a long ways away, for me, anyway, and sure, we're setting a target, and targets can be realistic, unrealistic, or whatever, but I would say a minimum of 45% would be more appropriate, but that's my feeling, we might do better than we should.
I think we, we hit for a target, but perhaps staff could help me out on this. This is in line with Metro Vancouver's targets, I understand, so we're really in line with what we're trying to achieve in targets, or just that, they're targets, we don't always hit every one, but we work towards it, and I think that's the important point here. So that, I'll call the question on H4. It carries unanimously. Move on to H5, seniors advisory committee recommended motion that we receive the 2019 Age Friendly Strategy Progress Report for information, can I have a motion, please? Counsel Coontz, second by Counsel Ferguson, discussion on H5, seeing none, call the question. Carries unanimously. Other business, okay, Counsel Richter, your item for other business.
Okay, I will move the motion about forming a broad-based Future of Farming Task Force in the township.
Thank you. Is there a second, or? Counsel Arneson seconds, any discussion? Counsel Long?
There's already been a bunch of work over the years with a sustainability foundation of some kind, what's happening with that? Agricultural sustainability?
Mr. Becken? The Sustainable Foundation, Agriculture Foundation.
Your Worship, I think it's reference to the Langley Sustainable Agricultural Trust Foundation, or something of that nature, it continues to do its work, it is a bit of a separate entity, it is working, I think, really in terms of specific projects, and I believe that from time to time, once a year, so they do come forward to council with their presentation, provide an update.
They should be included in this, I think. Thank you.
Well, there's some speakers on this, so I'm thinking also we could just refer this back to the committee that we already have, Agriculture Committee, could work on this, but I'll go through the speakers list. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, I appreciate the motion, I think it's, there are some challenges with our ALR lands, the use of our ALR lands, finding ways to make better use of our ALR lands in the township, you know, and we've had some discussions earlier today in council priorities, some of those, the changes with Bill 52 coming in, so all of those things are there, I just, I'm just wondering whether it might be helpful, rather than another task force, is to send this to our Agriculture and Economic Advisory Committee, providing a task for them to look at this, and send this, you know, the motion to them, and asking them to look at the best way for them as a committee to provide advice and that to us as a council, that is the role of that committee, and I think it would be a really good task for them to look at this, at this issue at this time, rather than creating a separate task force somehow independent of an advisory task force that we already have in place. So I would encourage that, and I'd encourage them to also partner with LFSA as they look to coming up with a strategy for us.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I could be supportive of doing that, certainly, this motion came out of a meeting that was recently held with some farmers, who are very, very frustrated with how restrictive farming regulations are becoming for them, and one of the farmers has even gone so far as to say, that's it, he's out of it, he's selling his business, he's going, selling his farm. So, I think there is an issue here, I think it needs to be looked at, and I'm fine if Counselor Whitmarsh wishes to put a referral back to Ag Advisory, I would second that motion.
Thank you, I'll take Counsel Arneson, and we'll look for motion, Counsel Arneson?
Oh, no, I agree with that, I think that it would be very helpful, and if that is, that's an appropriate committee, I just really think that part of what I gleaned from this motion is that looking at small to medium-sized farming enterprises is really critical, there are actually places where they incentivize people to help them to be able to remain in farming, and that may not be at the local government level, but some way, and I think we need to find experts and people to facilitate this discussion, so I'm optimistic that if you get the right parties together, the stakeholders, that you can come up with some really strong recommendations, because I think it is key to our future for food security in our community.
Counsel Ferguson?
Well, I think, I think it's Counsel Richter's certainly hit the nail on the head, so to speak, we asked, it's been a farm kind of day, agriculture-type day, or this afternoon after, under Council CAC Committee, we actually discussed farming and the bill proposed, the bill discussed, I think that, you know, we are a farming community, and it's important that we have people that speak and represent, or represent our committees and discuss things regarding agriculture and farming, so I certainly support the deferral, thank you.
Counsel Davis?
I would also support it, I think it'd be a good work plan for 2020. I know that, I think that a lot of work has been done in west, in, you know, the Fraser Valley on our food supply, and, but I think that this could be for Langley, and what we have in Langley are, you know, the amount of acres, and so that, if it would go to the ACC, then I think it would be more of a, for Langley type of a report or thing, because when you get reports, sometimes they're Fraser Valley, or they're Southern BC, and that's good, but I think that if it was, if, it would be a good work plan for our committee.
Good, thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh, moving. And second by Counsel Richter, I think we had a pretty good discussion, I'm gonna call the question on the referral, that's an I1. Carries unanimously, and we move I2, move to I2, Counsel Richter?
I will move the motion with regards to demolishing the Alder Inn.
Okay, is there a second, or? Counsel Arneson seconds, do you wish to speak to it, Counsel Richter? Well, I've got your mic on.
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Counsel Arneson?
Thank you, Worship. Actually, I support the motion, but I would actually like to move the matter to be referred to staff for a report back to council with respect to potential site redevelopment and timelines.
Is there a second, or? Second by Counsel Whitmarsh, open up discussion on the referral, Counsel Long?
I should have waited for anyone else to speak. I'm very much concerned about this motion to begin with, and the deferral, I don't even know why it would defer such a thing, because deferring means that you've got some hopes that the motion itself might pass, and I don't know who we think we are, running around destroying everything, you know, I mean, heritage is really taking care of what you've inherited, and this building has a tremendous history, in fact, I've prepared some slides, and a lot of staff are able to put them up, but there are some slides that talk about the heritage of this building, and the wherethes in the motion that was originally made talks about some of the darker moments of its life in the last 20 or 30 years, but prior to that, it was a phenomenal building that was able to host the Women's Institute for Business, 20 or 30 of them that got together, women got together and had lunches and had meetings and had all kinds of discussions on how to advance opportunities for women, so sure, it's had a bad history recently, but here we have a chance to change that, and once you rip something down, it's gone, and who wants a parking lot on the corner of 272nd and Fraser Highway, perhaps members of council do, but I certainly don't, and I don't think that there's any shortage of parking, actually, when you consider that the distance of the hotel from the ACUCC is the same distance as it is from the high school, and there are hundreds of parking spots there that never get used, so what makes you think that they're gonna use this one? And building a parking lot for a pool in the middle of your town, to me, doesn't sound like a very good idea. So I won't be supporting this, and I won't be supporting anything that talks about demolishing anything, until we have some serious discussions on what the potential uses could be for the property, and just like other buildings that we've discussed in the township, we don't tear buildings down until there's a reasonable expectation of a new plan that's been approved by council to replace it. So we've applied that principle to other areas of the township, and we should be applying it here, get a proposal to build something better there, perhaps, then you talk about demolition.
Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, just, so this is referring it to staff for a report on development timelines and possibilities, can I have it read back before I comment further on it, to clarify exactly what we're debating at this point? Because I also would have preferred a chance to talk to the motion before a referral.
The referral reads that this motion be referred to staff for a future on, for a report on future site development and timelines.
Okay, so yeah, I also, like I said, I'll reiterate, would have appreciated a chance to speak to the main motion prior to accepting or refer, I'd like to see some consistency on what our, if I have to rush to push my button, I'd like to know that. Mr. Becken, I said a couple of questions. In regards to this concern about removing buildings prior to approval from council, how many buildings has the Mitchell Group removed in the Williams neighborhood plan recently?
Going by recollection, I think it's only one or two in that area, it's houses, I think we're referring to.
At least two, I believe, I mean, so those have been removed prior to a plan coming to council, and been approved by council?
That would be correct, because it's got a designation in terms of the OCP, the neighborhood plan, but there is no zoning in place at this point.
And also because the township doesn't own them?
That's true.
Doesn't have this problem that we're having right now.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think we're already inconsistent in our decision-making in this regard throughout the township. People are allowed to remove their buildings prior to an approved plan for redevelopment, those might have been really nice houses, they could have been renovated into fantastic residences, so I'm disappointed that they perhaps weren't considered to be saved prior to them being removed. So I think in regards to the referral, I'm not really sure what we're gonna come back, so are we gonna be requiring detailed plans before we'll consider the item further, or are we simply going to be getting back a report that'll tell us what's already in the Alder Grove core plan, mixed-use density, five stories, 2.0 FSR, and maybe it'll be able to be built soon, maybe it won't? Is that what the report would say, Mr. Becken?
From our previous discussions on the matter, I think what staff were assuming was that there would be a review in terms of what the site presently has, and then a look at what the neighborhood plan, or sorry, the area plan would say, and what some commercial realities might be in terms of going forward. We hadn't planned on going much further at that point, because then we venture into redevelopment of the site, and at this point, I think our, we understood our mandate to be to secure the site, given the constraints of the area, the concerns of safety, and some of the previous uses that were there, and then to go forward from that point with a larger plan, but that would be incremental at being at a later date.
Okay, so suffice it to say, building condition today, what it's designated as, and the development reality on the ground, which was unknown essentially, could be developable at the current market conditions and costs, and might not be, that would be the report, so we just had the report?
Subject to finding out what the market availability is in terms of, I guess, its present structure and future uses in terms of redevelopment, I think it would be effectively summarize as what we've just said, but there'd be some need to expand upon those points.
Okay, so I don't support the referral, because I think I just got the report. So I think that in the consideration, at some point, council needs to start making decisions, so I actually toured the Alder Inn facility on Saturday, and what I saw was, I think all of council needs to go see what I saw, before they start talking about what an amazing building it is, and how it's gonna be refurbished and continue on. I would prefer, actually, if this fails, I'd vote not support this, and then I would make a referral that we organize a council tour of this building, prior to talking about saving it, when it could be used for positive interim uses, and get some actual information, go look at it, and then discuss it as a council, because I think that's appropriate, before we start talking about leaving it there for two or three years, because we can't make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We made a lot of decisions tonight. Counsel Ferguson?
Well, yeah, we have a lot of, obviously, people making comments about the particular building, and many of us are, have been inside, and, not during the shows, of course, but inside to look at the building and say, I mean, I, as was mentioned by staff, you know, we still have to worry about, you know, there's a fire there, people might have not mentioned that yet, but, you know, there's a fear of safety and the status, and the fact of what would be the next steps to bring it back to the type of dwelling that was before, and also, I'm not sure what insurance and things like that, these are all challenges that we have, and also the value of doing that. I'm not sure if that was part of the referral, or, Mr. Mayor, whether that was part of the referral, or that'd be a friendly suggestion to add on, if I may, through the chair?
The referral motion is just to refer back, come back with some options, doesn't mean that we will or will not make a decision to demolish it.
It's just safety issues regarding the fire, consequential of the fire.
This doesn't mean we will or will not demolish it, the referral is just to come back with options on what could be in this place, or whether we, you know, just to give more information.
I mean, that all depends, I mean, I understand what Counsel Woodward has said, I mean, you know, many of us know what the status of the building is, but we'd like a little bit more safety, and we can learn a lot, and I don't think there's a real need to jump on this, if there was a time-sensitive or something like that, so I'm prepared to accept the actual motion right now with the deferral motion, but I think, referral motion, and, you know, we'll wait to see what the report says, thank you.
Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I too really question this business of, you can't tear anything down unless we know the detailed plans of what's going to replace it, I actually think that's not legal, and the other, the other thing is that we have plans, we've got a, we've got a community plan, we've done a revitalization strategy, we know what we wanna put on that corner, because it's the gateway to a revitalized and changed Alder Grove, and I, you know, we've spent many years and many studies trying to figure out what we can do to help Alder Grove grow, and that's a key location. So I'm not opposed to waiting for staff to come back and just tell us exactly what the plan contemplates going there, and I certainly am not opposed to having a tour of the site as well, if staff wanna organize that, or if Mr. or Counsel Woodward wants to put that on as a subsequent motion, I'd support that one as well.
Thanks, yeah, I think that could just be direction to staff, if somebody wants to take a look at it. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. Just, through your worship to staff, what would the timing be on having information back from staff on what we could do and some of the options around this property?
Your Worship, when we discussed it, it was, we indicated it'd be sometime in the New Year, at this point, we really can't define it further, there's a fairly heavy workload we have to get through in the New Year with such things as budget and other sorts of things, but it's, it is there, and it's something that would be probably appropriate in terms of the March-April timeframe, because the existing tenancies technically lapse at that point, and there's some work to do between now and then, so in any event, we wouldn't anticipate taking any action in any event prior to then, so that may help you give some sense, it's more likely to be the March-April timeframe.
And the current tenancies last for how long?
March 30th, I recall, was the remaining one.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I haven't, most on here, I haven't heard suggest that we shouldn't be tearing those buildings down, I don't know, at this point, I just, I haven't done a tour, like Counsel Woodward. I would, I would like to have some more information, and for me, a couple of months probably is not going to make And for me, a couple of months probably is not going to make the difference. I'm not interested in seeing them stay the way they are for the next two or three years. I don't think, I certainly haven't suggested that. I'm not sure who has. But I'd like us to deal with it and look at it. But I do want a bit more information as to what the timelines could be, what some other options could be, costs related to it. I just think there's not quite enough information for us that would be helpful to have from staff. So I'm supportive of the referral. Certainly don't want it to take a long time, but I am supportive of a referral that comes back in, you know, that timeframe of March-April.
Counsel Davis?
Yeah, you know, a lot of questions have been answered. I would support a referral. I don't know if a tour is going to change, you know, change things, but I would love to go on a tour. But I don't think that we're being so inconsistent. I think that we just going to refer this to staff to have us, what we, what can be there and in our OCP. And I know that, I don't know, 30-second answer from Mr. Backham isn't what I would have called a report on what we, we already know what can go there. So I'm going to support a referral.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
I'm going to switch to supporting it, because I hear other things happening at the table here that even trouble me more. I guess the question really is, should be addressed as well when the report comes back, why did council buy it? There must have been a purpose that you bought the hotel. And if it was to demolish it, well, I don't know why we paid so much for it to do that with taxpayers' money. Other people wanted to buy the building, and we outbid them. And I don't know if the public knows that, but that's what happened.
I don't know if that's.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, no, I appreciate we moving on to Counsel Woodward with that. I think that, you know, we're great concern for taxpayer dollars. Again, I'd just suggest a tour, the untold millions it's going to take of taxpayer dollars to restore that building. And that will not be coming from the private sector. And, yeah, I think that, you know, if some councillors feel the need for that report, that's fine. I don't. The other thing, though, is I'd like to consider amending the content of that report to also include a review of potential interim uses, such as parking, gathering spaces, and/or community gardens. To also consider as part of that review, if it's not going to be coming back until the spring, to also review those items, along with potentially long-term uses of the site.
Amendments, we move and seconded. Discussion on the.
Did I hear that right? Is it a community garden you want to put there?
Well, it's options. It's just adding options. That's all it's doing. So it's just an amendment to add some options. I'm going to call the question on, I'm going to call the question. It's just the options. They can just give us a sketch. Okay, it is, I've called the question on this amendment. It's not serious.
Did it say community garden?
I don't know what it said. It said gardens.
You should know what it says.
It said.
Yeah, can we have the motion read back?
Your worship, the reference was the amendment for the review to include such things as parking, community gardens, and gathering spaces.
Term uses, all potential interim uses, such as.
Yeah. Okay, I'm calling the question on amendment. Carries, Counsel Long opposed. Okay, so now we're back to the main motion as amended, the main referral as amended. I'm going to call the question on that. Carries, Counsel Woodward opposed. Okay. And is there any other business? Motion terminated. Counsel Davis moves termination. Second by Counsel Whitmarsh. Shall there's a favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you.